Morning, everybody. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of Commissioners meeting, Commission Committee meeting for Monday, April 22, 2013. I'm Bob Cole, your current Chairman of the Board. And we always say we start all our meetings with prayer and pledge, but this one, for some reason, we never do. So if y'all will just join me real quick for a short prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us, Lord, and, Lord, we just ask you for your guidance and your stewardship over all that we do. We'll give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. We'll start out with Economic Development Committee. No, I won't. I'll start out with our add-ons. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, under Economic Development, I have one addition, and that's Project Gold Rush update.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Melvin?
No change.
All right. Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I have one add-on that I would like to discuss, and that's Senate Bill 1024, an amendment that greatly impacts the Restore Act and how the money is handled for the disproportionately impacted counties.
All right. And I believe you indicated you'd like to do that.
If we could do that up at the front of the meeting, I think that would be...
Admin?
Yep.
Okay. We'll list that as item 1A, then. We'll take that first. All right. Anything else from staff? All right. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With my add-on, I have three items. First is discussion of submission of letter of intent to participate in Gulf Power Company industrial site evaluation and certification program. As we talked last Commissioners Meeting, several of us attended the Gulf Power Company Site Certification Program kickoff. It's a great thing to have a company investing in creating jobs, not only in our county, but across the region. At that meeting, I said that we would bring back some additional information. So today, we're...I'm going to recommend for Thursday's meeting, recommendation to submit a letter of intent to McCallum Sweeney Consulting Firm to evaluate Santa Rosa County industrial parks for possible site certification. We're going to, if the Board approves, recommend three of our sites, those sites being Northwest Florida Industrial Park at I-10 as an industrial site, 160-acre partial off G.F.H. Road as an industrial site, Whiting Aviation Park as an industrial park. Here again, these are not in any particular order. Once the evaluation is completed of these three areas listed above, staff will rank the top two sites and our parks to recommend back to the B.O.C.C. to complete the certification program. Keep in mind that Gulf Power Company will pay half the cost of the initial recommendation on the sites. The budget impact will be, to us, $2,750 per site evaluation. There'll be three of them, so that'll be a total of $8,250 to get the three sites recommended to the consulting group. So that'll be my recommendation on Thursday without objection. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Just one comment I did have, that if anybody's watching that has private industrial sites, this offer also extends to them. Gulf Power will not pick up half the tab, though, but while these folks are in town, maybe a good chance to folks like Jim Young or the Maltons, pull on any of those that could take advantage of them being in town. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, here again, I received some emails referencing the same thing you just said, and I would recommend any of those landowners who have industrial sites to contact Gulf Power.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, it passes till Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number two, discussion of amendment number four to Florida Department of Transportation Economic Development Trust Fund Agreement for Extension of the Railroad Spur to Gulf Cable Site in the industrial park. We approved this at our last meeting. What we're asking for today is to extend that agreement from May to November, and this allows us additional time to begin commencement of the rail spur. So that's going to be my recommendation for Thursday without objection.
Hearing that, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My add-on, and today it's information, but I'm going to ask for it to be on Thursday's agenda as well. We've been working with a company called Project Gold Rush for quite some time now. I guess about 30 days ago, we voted to approve selling our put-out-for-bids 30-acre sale within the industrial park. I believe it's tomorrow those bids will be finalized. It's my understanding at this time, we only have one company that's bidding on the partial. So I would like to place a placeholder on...for Thursday's agenda to go ahead and approve the selling of the property as long as it meets all of our requirements on Thursday. Any questions or comments? And this will allow them to go ahead and get started and not have to wait another two weeks.
That's it.
So I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing that, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. We'll move now to Administrative Committee, item number 1A. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make the Board aware, and anyone who may be watching, of an amendment that was filed on Friday, the Senate Bill 1024. This amendment that's pending in the Florida Senate attempts to remove the eight disproportionately affected counties and replace them with a quasi-public corporation in setting priorities for the expenditures over the federal Restore Act dollars. And we're talking about the county pot, the dollars that are under federal law, supposed to flow directly to the eight disproportionately impacted counties. SB 1024 would take 100% of those monies and put them in a trust fund administered by a corporation called Triumph Gulf Coast, to be set up by the Florida Legislature, that would be managed and overseen by five non-elected appointees. The act, or the bill, SB 1024, also goes on to lay out eligible expenditures of this 75% pot. And incredibly, environmental causes are left out as an eligible expenditure. The money can be spent for economic development, infrastructure, workforce development, tourism. And while all of those are certainly extremely important to the Panhandle, the BP oil disaster was an environmental disaster, not necessarily an economic, depending on your point of view. But for them to completely eliminate the possibility of funding any environmental projects out of that just flies in the face of the Restore Act. Now, the Restore Act was largely a product of local government. Local government pushed and pushed for the Restore Act. It was a...there were five different states that were involved in this. It's been federal law now for coming up on a year, and I think for the state senate to step in at this late date and try to wrest control of a large portion of the money that's supposed to come to the Panhandle, it just kind of flies in the face of credibility. The...there are a lot of issues with 1024. One thing that someone may argue benefits the Panhandle is that one part of Triumph Gulf Coast money, or one part of the money that's set aside under 1024, is that a majority of any fine money generated, or any economic damage recovery by the Attorney General of the State of Florida, goes primarily to the Panhandle. So there's a trade-off there. You get this, if we recover any money from the state's independent suit against BP, a majority of that goes to the Panhandle. But at the same time, we have potentially hundreds of millions, if not more, under the Restore Act, that are already earmarked for the Panhandle. There have already been processes set up in different counties, including Santa Rosa County, to develop a plan locally to expend those funds. For them to take that control back to Tallahassee at this point, I think, would be devastating for our region and really gut the efforts of the counties over the past two years with regard to the Restore Act. This is just another example of us having to look out for what happens to our east. The amendment is some 100 pages long or more. Only a portion of it affects Restore. It was filed Friday afternoon. The hearing on it is tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in Tallahassee. So I don't know, obviously, you know, what's going to happen, what to expect. Haven't heard a lot about it. I would suspect that once the environmental groups find out that environmental funding is off the table from this portion of Restore, that they're going to be up in arms, and they'll make a strong showing at the hearing tomorrow. So we'll just have to see what happens. In addition, just to get off of that for a moment, I don't know if my fellow Board members saw the blurb that came out on Medicaid right now. You know, we're facing an additional $400,000 in Medicaid funding under the Senate bill. That's a 35% increase over last year, or over this year, that the county will have to pay for Medicaid. So this is...we're coming up on the last two weeks of session, and you never know what's going to happen then, what's going to be introduced into these bills at the last minute. So everybody has to keep their eyes open. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch, thank you for, again, keeping your eye on the ball. As I've said before, I attend the National Association of Counties meetings, and quite often when we're discussing the Restore Act, Commissioner Lynch's name comes up in the Panhandle of Florida, that, you know, we kind of led the charge for the other states that were involved, not only our county, but the other states. So I thank you for that. Do we know who submitted this bill, or do we also know if there's a House companion bill to it? Any information out there like that that's available?
I think the bill was filed by Senator Gardner. My understanding is, I spoke with our...actually, Chris Holly, yesterday. I believe this would not require a House companion bill. It would be reconciled in conference, once it passes on the Senate side, so it wouldn't have to go through the regular process in the House.
It'd be nice to see us somehow let the state know that they need to set some rules or guidelines for themselves. You know, it seems like several times now, we get trapped in these 11th-hour, "throw it at us" type things, just like with the septic tank thing a few years ago now, so...all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Salter.
Obviously, we all have a tremendous amount of issues with Senate Bill 1024. Like Commissioner Lynch said, it's the counties that had done most of the work, working at the congressional level, to set the language on how this money would be distributed and how it would be spent. And here at the last minute, for the Senate to come in and try to muscle the money away just goes beyond any thought process. One of the things that everybody needs to make sure they understand, and Commissioner Lynch said this, the amendment sets criteria for projects focusing on economic issues, including tax relief, and not on environmental issues. Key statement here is, the non-elected Board, the non-elected Board chooses the projects. So we who represent the people have no say in how to enhance our county. My recommendation today would be for us to draft an email, sign it by either Commissioner Lynch or Chairman Cole, or all of us...
All of us.
And send that as quickly as we can to all of our representatives in Tallahassee. And I would hope the media does a good job of covering this to make sure everyone understands what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The other concern I have is, of course, you know, this Triumph Gulf Coast, how...what's going to be the cost of operating the corporation? How much is that going to pull away from the pot, you know? So because they're not going to do it for free, and this was pointed out, it's a non-elected Board, so who's going to set their pay scale? You know, there could be millions sucked off on that just for paying administrative fees through that, so...all right. Very important, and hopefully our viewers out there, public, will let their state representatives know how they feel about it also. Any other comments, questions before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, Commissioner Salter made that in the form of a motion, a request.
That's correct. I would ask us to approve that today so we can get that sent, and I would move that without objection.
Hearing that, it passes, and I think it should have all five of our names on it. All right. Thank you. Thanks again. All right. Item number one is discussion of bid in the amount of $473,751 from Roberson Excavation Incorporated for base bid and alternatives, 1A, 2A, and 2B, for the Navarre East CDBG sewer project as low bidder meeting specification. We got any comments or questions on that?
I just displaced the backup information in there, and the Roberson excavation was just so low, I did...you see Phil Phillips's letter and his spreadsheet on that. Phil is the project engineer with Faber Engineering. If there are any questions, he seems...he's confident that we can, you know, process this and bring it in successfully. But they were significantly lower, and they were consistently lower when it was broken out. But I just, if there were any questions the Board has, Phil's here to...I appreciate him coming.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, please.
Does this...do the engineers anticipate that this project will involve de-watering? And if they do anticipate that, did this apparent low bidder include those costs in his estimate?
It is entirely possible. Push your speed button, please. It is entirely possible there may be a little de-watering, and yes, he does include it. To build upon what Hunter said, this is the second time this project was bid. The first time, Evans' contracting was low. They failed to acknowledge the addendum item, and they were pretty low the first time. But I know Rick Evans, he's done a lot of this similar type construction, so I knew he was good. When it bid the second time, Roberson, who we also know and have done some work for, was even significantly lower than the low bid previously. We've actually done some due diligence this time that we wouldn't normally have done. We have gone as far as we've, of course, contacted references who have no problem with his work. We even went and spoke with his suppliers to make sure he was in good standing with his suppliers, that they had no problem with his bid. They were fine. We gave the contractor the opportunity to come into our office, to go over the scope of work, to review that with him, to make sure that he has each of these line items in his bid. He has expressed confidence that he could do it for those prices. I see no line item that does not have both material and labor in it. His labor is low-margin labor, certainly is. But as a result of that meeting, he expressed confidence in the ability to do it, and he provided the letter that I asked, which is, I believe, attached to my letter of recommendation. And as even the last check, I've spoken with his bonding company. It would be common, in the case of a contractor being extremely low, that the bonding company would have concerns. They did. Quite frankly, the conversation with the bonding company was, are you going to bond him, or would you rather default on the bid bond? And they have indicated that they're going to bond the project based on what they know about the project. So all of those facts being the case, you know, we can find no reason not to award it to him, particularly in light of the fact that he's expressed the ability to finish the job for the price bid, so...
That was going to be one of my concerns, whether this was a bonded project, and you indicated that it is.
It is. It's a payment and performance bonded project. You are protected from that standpoint.
Good. And it does have completion dates and penalties?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Good. All right. And hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number two is discussion of funding options for a judicial...construction of a judicial facility. Gentlemen, I've had this put on the agenda. I think everybody here, we've served long enough together to know how I feel about our current judicial facility. We need to get this ball rolling. There's no two ways about it. I think everybody I've spoke to in the past several years realizes how poor of conditions we have down there, and even with the portable offices that we provided, they're starting to already show some deterioration. My concern, we don't continue putting money...pouring money down a hole. It's kind of like, you know, the feeling you have when you own a boat. So I don't want to see us do this. Also, we have a...you know, we pride ourselves as a board in standing behind our commitments and standing behind our word. And we have a commitment, memorandum of understanding with the City of Milton to provide some...something down there within the next five years, and that clock, I believe, is almost, if not in its last year at this point. I asked Ms. Bell to look at what we could achieve from a one-cent local option sales tax that would be dedicated to this. You see the number of $13,194,000 there in her report. I can't think myself of any other funding options. We also, in this report, there's an unassigned reserve, but we know from being through disastrous events like Ivan, how that will deplete those reserves very quickly for us to be able to put Santa Rosa County back in working order. I'd like to open this for some discussion. Also, it's not in our backup, but I do have a screen that I'd like to put up in just a moment. There's some real estate that's available right now. I brought this to the Board a few months ago. I've explored other possibilities. I've talked to Bill Salter from Salter Advertising about a partial property he has. My feelings have always been to build it out by the judicial...or by the Santa Rosa County Jail, where we already own property, and one day intend to, or hope to, you know, make that a bypass around Milton. But, you know, this...you know, sitting on this board is all a matter of give and take, and it doesn't appear that I, you know, I can get enough give to move it out there. So I've explored the possibility you see in front of you, which is about a 12-acre partial that's located behind TNA Tire. The building's directly in the center below the picture, or the current Gulf Power office building, and I believe a warehouse facility. The one that's directly above that is TNA Tire. This is a partial property that, according to the study that was done, exceeds the number of acres that we need. It's a partial property that, according to Julian Cooy, it's right off the bat, he says, this is prime real estate. The only slight worry he has in the southeast corner, there may be some drainage issues. I also got some feedback from Mike Schmidt in our engineering department. In 2008, our office did a study on the number of courthouse sites, and felt this site, due to the irregular geometry, lacked adequate ingress and egress from dogwood and size. So taking those two into account, one that is prime property, and two that there is a lack, if you'll look, I believe Gulf Power, being the corporate citizens they are, we could very possibly, off this loop at the bottom, get access to the back of the property. And then on the north side, the divot you see into the property is a home, an estate of a local citizen that recently passed away. My thoughts are, we ask staff to investigate the estate and see if the possibility of that property going on the market that would give us access on the north side of the property. My thoughts are, and I won't put it all on the table so you guys know, you know, we can't knock on each other's door and talk about this, the public would come in off of Dogwood. That would be your public access to the new judicial center. These other two accesses that I mentioned could be explored if they were obtainable. You could have one access for the judiciary, another access for the sheriff and prisoners, giving us multiple ingress and egress. If that property can be purchased, that would give us a total of 15 acres, well over what the study from HOK said we needed for future expansion. The property's high and dry. The caveat also to this is it's within the city limits, so now the city council and the mayor like the idea a little more of the moving it out to East Milton. It's more centrally located. Mr. Salter has a piece of property directly across the street from there and just south of the post office. Also has a large divot in it that we would have to explore. But right now, through Paul Salter, who handles Mr. Salter's real estate, doesn't seem to be interested in selling it, certainly not at the price this 12 acres is available for. This 12 acres right now is available for $350,000 on a short sale. It's almost unheard of for that much property, but there it is. It's out there, and it is available. If we did move forward on this, the caveat that I'd like to put out there to the public is, if we purchase this property and we're able to put this whole package together that I just mentioned, we also keep our eye on the ball for Kmart and the current Food World property that's vacant. Kmart, as we all know, are closing. The Nine Mile store is currently closing. Mobile Highway has closed a year ago. Nine Mile is selling off their interior shelving and stuff as we speak. If we seen this happen to our local Kmart, and I certainly don't wish them ill will or not lacking, I'd like to see them stay there and do well, but the reality of it is, it doesn't look like it's going that way, and they're making decisions to close some of these buildings. That we would immediately investigate purchasing that property and do, just like the Board did in the mid-'90s, and convert that property into a judicial center. At the price we could purchase this for, it could always go back on the market. It could be developed into other county entities, whatever the Board would decide to at that time. But I don't...I see this as being two questions. One, where we're going to build it, and two, how we're going to pay for it. I don't believe the public should...you know, we should certainly garner input from our, you know, the people we represent, but I think it's up to this Board to step forward, do the job we're paid to do, make a decision, put a piece of property on a ballot and say, this is where it's going to be built. That question's no longer in the mix. Now, we'd like to garner the support of the citizens of Santa Rosa County for a sales tax to build the building. And that's kind of my whole thoughts on this at this time. I appreciate input, but I certainly think it's something that's overdue. Mr. Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that we are...pardon me. Santa Rosa County needs a new courthouse. I think that's a given in everybody's mind, however. To isolate one piece of property and say, that's where we're going to put it, and let's go buy that, and maybe we won't use it, maybe we'll do something else. I think what the public would like from us is a package. I was not very politically involved, but remember the last time we went to the public with a request to fund the courthouse? We didn't put a price tag on it, and universally, that was the problem that the voting public had with the proposition, is it did not have a price tag. I think for this or any other effort to be successful, we need to identify a piece of property, or a probable piece of property with a price on it, identify what we're going to build on it, you know, and a price on it, how long that would take to amortize for the one-cent sales tax, and then put all of that before the public with a date certain that it sunsets, so that the other...just so that there's some definite start and end points, and everybody understands what they're voting for and what we expect to get at the end game, instead of an open-ended situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin, I appreciate you pointing that out, and I did think through that also. My thoughts, we've all...already from HOK and that same report, a needs assessment came up with a price of about $32 million. $32 million, when you're looking at the $300,000, $400,000 price tag of a piece of property, that is fairly insignificant in the whole project. But let's even round it up to, say, and hopefully, right now, building costs are down... are down, material's still up a little bit, but labor costs are certainly down and we're seeing that in just about every project we bid. Uh, my thoughts are if we use the thirty-two million dollar mark, the, the amount that's showing right here of thirteen million dollars a year, even at conservative figures, the, I agree, those numbers that the public wants to see, the reports they want to see, my estimation by looking at that is we could ask for that referendum to be three years. I would like to have, add something to that though, that, uh, wasn't ever done before. Every quarter, we have a great GI, a great information system now with our, our internet. Every quarter, we post where, where we're at with that. You know, are we ahead of schedule? Are we behind schedule? Uh, that way the general public knows. The other two things that you mentioned, I believe the last ten years ago, when I first got elected, there was a price tag on it, but people weren't comfortable with it. But what I think really got people's goat at that time was the add-ons to it. There were roads added on to it. There was not a defined end to it. Uh, and, and also location. I don't, you know, I know a lot of folks think that it should go back where it is now, but you figure twenty, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, where could we grow a judicial center in the current location? There's, there's just virtually no room to grow it, whereas a location like this, uh, has room to grow. So taking in the account of that, I do want to provide that it would be a referendum sincerely and only for construction of this judicial center, only for three years, and hopefully retire it sooner. By giving those reports, we could possibly retire it in two and a half years. But part of that, uh, part of that vote would be to retire it as soon as we hit our mark, not continue it three years because we asked for three years. I believe that if this board commissioners moves forward with something that's that positive in this community, that the, and show the folks, just like, we always hear referrals back, just like you did it when we built the jail, that we move this forward, we would earn the public's trust to the degree that when we had to ask for another one cent sales referendum for a particular project, we lay it out. We've earned the trust of the public that we're gonna do exactly what we say we're gonna do. We're not gonna add bells and whistles to it. We're not gonna build a Taj Mahal. We're gonna build an efficient judiciary center that'll provide the service for this county for the next fifty, sixty, maybe even eighty years. So, and unless we get the ball rolling somewhere, this is just my idea. If somebody has another piece of property in mind, by all means, let's add it to the mix. But I, I think until we identify that piece of property and say, this is where it's gonna be built, we've done that as a board of commissioners with the input that we hear from our constituents, so that the only question on the ballot is, and we're gonna build it for thirty-two million dollars at this location, will you support that? Yes or no? No bells and whistles added. And that's, that's my whole soapbox.
Mr. Chairman. I concur, as we have for about the last forty years, I think, that we need a new courthouse. Uh, people have often asked me, when are y'all gonna build a new courthouse? And my response always is, when are you gonna build one? Because it's not us building it, it's gonna be the citizens, the taxpayers, uh, seeing the need to build that new facility, uh, and then coming onboard, uh, and, and, and paying for it. So it's our job to present a plan.
There you go.
Show all the positives, but, but everybody has to understand, we can't build it. It has, it has to be our, our citizens to build it. Uh, I think, uh, and I, and I agree. Uh, I know that Milton, the City of Milton, they're right in the middle of trying to do a master plan for downtown Milton. And part of that master plan includes courthouse staying where it is, going somewhere else before they can finish their master plan. So, uh, we need to build a new courthouse for all the right reasons, but we also need to, uh, give Milton an idea of how they're gonna develop, uh, downtown Milton over the next several years. I also agree that the best location in Santa Rosa County is Kmart. Uh, I think, as I've said in the past, we don't need to get hung up on the site, because if you can't decide on the site, you're never gonna convince the public, uh, to support building their courthouse. I think we also need to think about, are we going to ask for a half cent or a one cent? Uh, I know that a half cent takes twice as long, obviously with more interest, but we need to look at the economy and see, uh, how a half cent or a one cent would impact, uh, the average working citizen in Santa Rosa County. So I think those are some things we gotta work through as well. So, uh, like I've always said, put it on a referendum and, and let the people decide. So I'm ready to move forward. Uh, I think we, uh, probably need to reactivate the old site location plan that we had and see if there are any additional sites that we might want to include in that.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I agree with, uh, with a lot that's been said here today. I, I especially agree with Commissioner Salter's statement that we need to, uh, either reactivate the, uh, the site committee. I wasn't, I wasn't around when that site committee was, but I, I think we need to, we definitely need to investigate other site possibilities. Uh, you know, speaking with people on the south end of the county, they prefer a site, at least in my, in my opinion, they prefer a site on Avalon. It's centrally located, easy access from Gulf Breeze, easy access from Navarre, and then co-located between Milton and Pace. So I, I think we need to, uh, broaden our, our scope a little bit. Uh, the fact that it's not in the city of, uh, city limits of Milton is not a deal breaker there. They can always annex, uh, any particular piece of property. They don't have to annex a swath of property, they can annex a lot. Uh, so a, a particular lot or acreage that we need. So I'd like to see us, uh, get a group formed that would consist of representatives from all parts of the county and, uh, start discussing potential sites and move forward with this. I will say, I don't want to, I would prefer that we not take any action today because Commissioner Williamson is not here and I think, uh, we owe it to him certainly to, and his constituents to, uh, get his input before we move forward. But I, I'm ready to move forward as well. Uh, I think picking a site's the first, first order of business.
And I, and I didn't want to move it forward with this myself. I appreciate that and I certainly want Commissioner Williamson, because this is gonna be a, a process that we need to go through. But I, and I appreciate the input from the rest of you, because I've, I've tried to bring this up before and, and pretty much got stonewalled and it didn't move. We, we need to move this forward. That's the reason I put it on, on the agenda is so we can get things going. The only thing I would ask for is that, uh, uh, county attorney be allowed through our rec, our request just to investigate the piece of, of a piece of property that is, uh, juts into this, just so we know whether it, uh, as a board that, that property's gonna go on the market, it's not gonna go on the market, it could, it could be part of what we're asking in our plan. And that's, that's just giving her the leeway to know that the boards, uh...
Maybe I got ahead of you, but I'm already checking on it.
Pardon me?
Perhaps I got ahead of you, but I've already checked on it.
Okay, all right. Okay. Just wanted you to feel comfortable with that.
It is, um, certainly with, with Commissioner Williamson not being on there, it makes sense. Uh, let us kind of come back to you in committee two weeks. We'll kind of dust off that, uh, process we went back, we went through. I believe it was two thousand and eight that Michael alluded to, uh, you know, kind of going through the, kind of the site review type thing. I don't know that all of those sites will be particularly germane, but it'll show you what we've, we've done. Uh, there may be some others that are, that are maybe, makes more sense now. I mean, it, you know, it's been five years, so, so we'll come back with, with kind of what that, that was and let us kind of think it through and so we can help you a little bit.
All right. Well, that's how we gotta get things done and get the ball rolling, so. I thank you, I thank everybody for their... Oh, yeah, well, unfortunately, that's, that's what we're up here for, so. All right, thank you very much. We will take no action on Thursday. We'll look for this to come back at our next meeting date, the end of the, end of this month, so. Or at first of next month, I'm sorry. First part of next month. Okay, item number three, we'll move on now to, get my book back. All right, item number three is discussion of scheduling local restore council meeting on Monday, May sixth, two thousand and thirteen, beginning at three PM in board meeting room. There was no conflict, uh, myself and Commissioner Lynch are on that board?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, Mr. Walker and I talked about this. I think it's time that we, we schedule another follow-up meeting for the local restore council to discuss what's, um, what's transpired and, and, and what's to come. You know, just to reemphasize the importance of SB ten twenty-four, if that were to pass and become law.
Yep.
We no longer need a local restore council.
Yep.
We no longer need an engineering consulting firm. Uh, you know, we have the interview scheduled for, for late May. You know, that would be moot at that point. So I would like to go ahead and, and continue with, uh, scheduling this meeting on Monday, May sixth. Uh, just, you know, bear in mind, we may, may have to terminate that council at some point.
I'm glad you added that last comment too about the engineering firms. Perhaps they can use some of their lobbying efforts to lobby against this. Thank you. All right, then we'll, uh, tentatively move that till Thursday without objection and hearing that it passes. Item four is discussion of Santa Rosa County applying for tax deeds on eight parcels and authorization for execution of all relevant documents pursuant to Florida statutes. Backup's in your folder. Mr. Walker, you have any other comments on this? All right, we'll move that to Thursday without objection. Item five is discussion of allocation of eighteen thousand dollars for promotion of Navarre Beach Singer-Songwriter Festival and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars for the two thousand and thirteen fireworks on Navarre Beach as recommended by the Tourist Development Council. No comments or questions. I'll move that to Thursday without objection, hearing that it passes. Item six is a public hearing scheduled for nine thirty AM Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. It's a vacation of a portion of Big Loop, uh, excuse me, Big Oak, Oak Loop contingent upon conveyance of easement for turnaround access as requested by David Daniel representing Steve Wagner. And we'll hear that on Thursday. Hearing no objections to that, it moves till Thursday. And now we'll go into item number one on our engineering report. Mr. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Item number one is a discussion of a local agency, uh, program agreement with FDOT for the construction of paved shoulders on County Road one ninety-seven. And that's included in attachment A in your package. A couple of years ago, uh, Mr. Whitfield and I were approached by DOT that were looking to spend some safety dollars and wanted to look at, uh, different areas in Santa Rosa County relative to, uh, safety issues and do a study on county roads and, of course, agreed to that. And out of that, uh, DOT had hired a consultant. The consultant had developed plans and specifications to do this portion of Shamukla Highway and, if I can get my computer projected here. Thank you. Right here at Fox Pond Trail, northward on Shamukla Highway through the curve just north of one eighty-two. And that's the section that they are, um, proposing to install paved shoulders. This is a hundred percent funding by FDOT, but Santa Rosa County will be asked to manage the project through the LAP process. And again, will be, uh, required to hire a EEO compliant, uh, uh, consultant with that of which DOT will fund. And so we're asking today for the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Salter.
Mr. Blaylock has briefly owned this project since it is up in the Shamukla area. Uh, one thing, uh, this will help do is, it's part of the Shamukla Elementary School zone. Uh, Shamukla turns on to one eighty-two and that's always been a bad congested area there, especially with a curve before you get to one eighty-two. Over the years, we've looked at trying to square up that intersection. Do, have we made any progress on that, Roger? Shamukla, Avis?
We have, we have several schematics that would do that, but it was my understanding with road and bridge, there was not a cooperative property owner. Is that correct, Avis?
That's correct. We didn't quite have the room. We needed to construct the, uh, the improvement that you're talking about because, uh, we had an unwilling, uh, someone who's unwilling to sell property there.
Uh, as we move forward with this project, is there enough right of way to put a left turn lane in off Shamukla onto one eighty-two going north?
There would, but it would not be in this project. That would...
Could we look at the feasibility and the cost of adding that? Not saying that we would approve it, but just look at the feasibility of putting a left turn lane in? That would be there by the store? Because you've got a lot of school bus activity there.
We can certainly look into it. I, I don't know how it's gonna tie together with this project. I don't know what their, what their, uh, schedule is.
Yes.
As far as trying to build this project. It may be something that we have to just let them go ahead and do this project and us come in after that time to look at constructing a left turn lane.
Just, just take a look at it as we go forward.
I would concur with Mr. Whitfield's assessment because indeed, once this agreement's signed, it's going to bid. They have plans, specs, front end documents, all they need is this agreement and it's, it'll be bid. And by the time we were to go back through DOT's consultant to get this, we'd be perhaps six months down the road. I think we should look at us doing it after the fact, or if we could develop preliminary plans, just negotiate and bring back to this board, uh, a contractor's est, the low bids estimate to include that.
Long as we're looking at it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two is a discussion of requests from the City of Milton. Uh, they're requesting to connect to our existing six-inch force main that is our industrial park force main in, uh, in the, uh, the lift station's actually on airport property. But as you look at this aerial here, this is Peter Prince Airport, this is Old Stagecoach Road, and they're asking to connect, uh, through the airport, a three-inch force main that will connect into our industrial park, six-inch force main that runs along the property line and the industrial park and eventually goes into the City of Milton's Triplex, uh, pump station here. Uh, and essentially what they will do is come down Old Stagecoach Road in the right of way and then jump onto airport property just for this small, uh, this small three-hundred foot run to connect. What this will allow is to get sewer down on, uh, River Road. There was an individual who's trying to build in the floodplain and is restricted by some septic tank issues. And so they approached City of Milton and of course, the City of Milton is proposing to put a three-inch, uh, low-pressure sewer. So they have a grinder pump station, uh, at the home pumping back to, uh, the force main. And we've looked at it and, and concur with the request.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I know one of the thing, I know one of the, uh, elements of certification for a site is, uh, excess capacity in the various utilities. Have we, uh, taken a look at that? Uh, make sure that by accommodating a request from City of Milton for a small residential development that we don't in turn cost the county an industrial development? I mean, how much capacity do we have? How much capacity will that three-inch force main consume? And will that leave us enough to meet the required reserves as laid out by our site consulting teams that just initially briefed us that those are one of the things that they look for?
Yes.
We need to be very careful about looking at that.
That's what we'd be looking at. And just for clarification, this is for a single-family home and, and ultimately could connect other homes through there. Uh, but we will certainly look at that. Now, you, you understand, we have reserved capacity that we've purchased from the City of Milton for our industrial complex. And, uh, we bought that, what, fifteen, twenty years ago from the City of Milton as a reservation? And any of this additional would not come off of that for our capacity. And the, I can tell you, the Triplex and the City of Milton have a tremendous excess of capacity as relates to single families. Of course, if they were put in several hundred homes, that would be a different story.
I also understand that the limiting factor in this, or put another way, the long pole in this tent is the six-inch force main. Here, go back to my original question, is there enough capacity in that six-inch, not talking about downstream, what services that six-inch, I'm talking about that six-inch pipeline will hold a defined amount of fluids, that and no more?
That is correct, sir.
So my question is, have you taken the time to examine the capacity in that line? Add in that new request and do we still have enough capacity in that six-inch line?
Yes.
To comply with our certification requirements? That's my question.
And we will have that, that for you before Thursday. We'll have that specific answer.
Roger, I'm gonna move that one and the first one without objection, hearing that it passes.
And we'll provide additional information on number two. Item number three is, uh, a discussion... Item number three is a discussion of the Class 1 airspace design for central landfill and the amount of $156,956 to Geosintec Consultants. That's in attachment C. As we move forward with our landfill each day, we're filling it up day by day. And in order for us to be able to meet our future projected growth, it's time for us to move forward with our new cell design. So we're recommending our consultants to proceed with that task order.
Any questions from members of the board? All pretty much laid out here for us as far as the breakdown. Hearing none, it moves till Thursday without objection.
Item number four is a discussion of the approval for HDR Engineering to do our construction quality assurance and construction certification in the amount of $69,100. And this is for our landfill gas construction project. This QAQC is required by DEP as within our permit, and we recommend that task order to proceed.
Just a question, Roger. We already went out for RFQs or RFP on the construction, the actual contractor? Who won that bid?
They should be, they should be back next Tuesday, I do believe.
Okay, all right, so we haven't gone there yet?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. I'm looking forward to getting that moved forward.
Okay.
All right, hearing no other comments or questions from the board, we move that till Thursday.
And then, item number five, our final item, is a final plat for the village at Grand Ridge that could come before the board.
All right, we'll move that to Thursday if necessary, without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes the engineer's report.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch for Public Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of a resolution of continuing support for applications for federal transportation alternative program or TAP funding. There's backup in your agenda books. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I will move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing no comments or questions, it moves till Thursday.
And that's the only item we had under Public Services, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lynch. At this time now, we'll go to Public Works Committee. We have Commissioner Melvin going to read that today. Commissioner Williamson had the absence this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six items on the Public Works Committee. Item number one is discussion of a one-year extension of agreement with Gulf Atlantic Culvert Company Incorporated for aluminized culvert piping at the current pricing. And unless there are questions, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of a one-year extension of an agreement with Arcadia Culverts Incorporated for polyethylene HDPE and by two-minus-coated culvert piping at current pricing. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of a purchase of a diesel pile hammer from Seal Brook Steel Corporation at a cost of $33,050 based on comparison shopping. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is discussion of extending East Bay Boulevard multipurpose path 670 feet west of Edgewood Drive, an estimated cost of $35,000 utilizing previously approved funding. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is discussion of a request for an always-stop intersection at Bay Street and Woodlor Circle, Bay Street and Oriole Beach Road, and L'Oreal Drive and Harrison Avenue slash Shady Pine Drive. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think this probably would merit a bit of discussion. We had, as I'm sure you all remember, a month ago or so, we had a fatality, pedestrian fatality, down, I believe it was on Laurel Drive. And the Monday before that, just a couple of days before that accident, I was contacted by a resident down there who requested some intersections be analyzed for potential four-way stops and other traffic calming measures. Then, you know, we had that, the fatality two days later. And since then, Public Works has conducted some phone polling down in that area about these three particular intersections as kind of the first step of trying to improve safety back in that neighborhood. You know, it's a, there are a lot of homes back there, it's a tight area. You have Oriole Beach Road, which is, you know, like Edgewood and Hollywood Valley City, it's a very long, very straight road, and people speed down it in addition to those other streets. Plus, we have Oriole Beach Elementary there that I take a particular interest in. But in any event, the three intersections were evaluated with the phone poll, and I believe two of the intersections garnered roughly 60% support for installation of stop signs. And the third intersection was somewhat less than 50% in favor of a stop sign. So I'll let Mr. Whitfield, if you have anything to add there.
I would just point out that, you know, on these intersections, and I know some have said that perhaps we shouldn't be doing phone polls to decide on safety. And I think the answer to that is that if we were to strictly go by the Uniform Traffic Control Manual, which is the manual that is published by the Federal Highway Administration that is used throughout the United States, if we were to go strictly by that manual, none of these intersections would even come close to meeting the warrants in that manual. It would require several hundred vehicles per hour approaching these intersections. It would require, one of the warrants would require a significant number of crashes at these intersections. One of the warrants would require that the volume of vehicles be approximately equal from both directions. And, you know, so they would not even come close. These would not even come close if we strictly went by the manual. And of course, you're not obligated, as a board, to go strictly by the manual. If you feel that it would provide a safety enhancement to install these stop signs. But it's just something I think the public needs to be aware of, that, you know, it's not something that should be pointed out that we should have done sooner, because if we went by the manual, they wouldn't come close to meeting the warrants. But again, you have, that's one reason we think the phone polls are a good idea, just because we think it's not a bad idea to have the public's input on these matters.
Commissioner Lynch, just a question for you, if I might. I see no reason to wait until Thursday. In a two-day period of time, somebody passed away the last time you've got a phone call. And if the phone polls have already been completed, I'd be willing to move it today if that's the will of you as the commissioner of that district.
We may have some additional public input between now and Thursday. You know, a lot of people do have widely varying opinions on whether or not a traffic, a stop sign is warranted in any particular intersection. So, as much as I would, I would like to go ahead and say yes, let's go ahead and install them. Let's wait until Thursday to see if we garner any more public input, and then move forward with the two intersections that ranked or achieved more than 50% positive responses. Mr. Whitfield, was that Bay Street and Oriole Beach and the Laurel-Harrison intersection?
That's correct. The two that had a positive support in favor of the stop signs were Oriole Beach and Bay Street and Laurel Drive, and then it's, you know, it's Harrison Street in one direction, Shady Pine in the other. So it's that intersection. The one that did not have positive support for the stop signs was Bay Street and Woodlor Circle. A lot of that may have came from, you know, maybe the residents of Woodlor Circle. I don't know. But for whatever reason, that one did not have positive support for the stop signs.
Let's just bring those two forward to our Thursday meeting, if we could, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Don't have any problems with that. Anybody else have a problem with that? Then we will move discussion of a request for always-stops for the Bay slash Laurel intersections forward for Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is discussion of a request by Figure 8 LLC for modification to the blanket drainage easements along Ten Mile Road. Mr. Whitfield?
We've looked at this, and this was part of provision in the original agreement, that the different sections or segments of that could be modified. We've looked at it. We don't feel like there's any drainage issues in that area that an easement would help us, so we don't have any objection to this request.
Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That completes Public Works, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Melvin, thank you very much. I hope you'll please continue with your Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have five items this morning. Item number one is discussion of a budget amendment 2013-119 in the amount of $35,500, which will fund the proposals from Neighbor Giblin and Nickerson, PA for fire services. Assessment rate study is approved at the April 11, 2013 regular board meeting, and these will be coming from the general fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of budget amendment 2013-120 in the amount of $85,577 to carry forward the funds in the self-insurance fund for payment of a settlement with workers' compensation claims from Paul Joyner and Roman Jackson in the amounts of $35,556.08 and $50,000 respectively, as approved at the April 8, 2013 regular board meeting. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, a little point of clarification there?
Yes, sir.
The, that takes the full amount out of District 5 projects' funds. At some point, we're going to reconcile the construction costs. A portion of it that equates to what was necessary to bring it up to standards so we could conduct county meetings down there is going to be paid for outside of District 5 Recreation Funds. So I don't know that we will have that split on Thursday. If you want me to work one up, I will.
All right, well, Commissioner Lynch's comment is noted, and we'll move that to Thursday without objection, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of budget amendment 2013-121 in the amount of $1,097,000 to fund the construction of the Tiger Point Community Center from the District 5 project funds, as approved at the November 8, 2012 board regular meeting. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is discussion of the budget amendment 2013-122 in the amount of $70,000, which will fund the special primary and special general house election for District 2 elections, which will be held May 14, 2013, and June 11, 2013, from the general fund. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is discussion of the county expenditures and checkbook register. When that document is prepared, I will review it and have it on your desk for your signature. Mr. Chairman, I recommend we move this item to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. And man, I think Commissioner Lynch's comments pertain to item number three. He was getting excited about that money coming out of your fund. All right, any other comments from our staff, other commissioners, general public, county clerk of courts? You got anything? Okay, if not, then we adjourn.